I need to put out a whole bunch more. May 7th.
So join me for prayer. Lord, just thank you for this day. Just thank you for all that you do for us. Just be with us as we go over the business to come before the county council today and just guide us and direct us. Lord, just thank you for each and everyone that's here. Please provide safety and travel home in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderdog, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started here. Did everybody have a chance to look over the minutes? Were there any questions, additions, corrections? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the March meeting. Karen, a second?
Second.
Second, Ron, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up, Jared Hutzkraw.
Good afternoon.
All right, now before you, just looking for a little guidance and support. The issue I have, what I'm requesting is, when I come before you in September for my 2025 budget, I would like, going to ask for my support for $8,008,000 to my case management prep fund budget. For the reason, we need to switch eDiscovery Systems at our office. So just to give you a little bit more detail and not to go too far into the weeds about it, for every criminal case, we're under an obligation to turn over all the discovery we have, all of the evidence that we get, in our case, to defense counsel. When I first started, that was pretty easy. You had copies of the paper charges, put some, if you had some photographs, if you're lucky enough, you put them on a disk, you ship those to defense counsel. It doesn't work that way anymore because of body cams, surveillance, video, cell phone dumps, all the technology that we have in most of our cases, which is great in helping us prove our cases, that also has to be turned over to defense counsel, too. And that's become so overwhelming that we cannot just burn all of that onto a disk. Most of that stuff, we even fit on people. It's so, so large, the file sizes are so large. So what we did back in 2022, body cams really starting to add to the county, was we went to a free system that we had through the Indiana Prosecute Attorney's Council Case Management System. It's just generically called eDiscovery. It worked for a while, but there are so many counties on it that they are now really into storage issues. They can't afford the cost of storing all of this information. And so they've been telling us about the last six to eight months to look for other means to do this because this system is not going to be free for much longer, it may not exist, period, for much longer. So for at least six months, starting late last summer, early fall, I've been looking for alternatives on how it is that we're going to be able to take in this electronic discovery and then submit it out to other defense counsel. One of the other issues with that, and George is in the back, and Terry, and I know they can share their story about it, and one of the reasons why I attached those four letters from the law enforcement agencies is, the system we have, although it works, it doesn't work smoothly. A lot of times, officers have difficulty downloading their body cam footage because they have to take it off of their system and then upload it into ours. For some officers, it works great, for other officers, it may take hours for that to work. And like I said, George could talk to you about it at greater length because he hears it from his guys. This system, and the reason I chose Axon system is, the sheriff's department runs on Axon Body Cam, the police department runs on Axon Body Cam, Bloomfield does, Indiana State Police does, so almost everybody does, with the exception of Worthington. They don't yet, Jasonville does not, but I'm under the understanding that when their contract is up, they're going to look to switching over to Axon. You might ask, why is that helpful? If we were on the same eDiscovery system as law enforcement agencies, it's just a simple push of the button, their body cam that's already been uploaded to their system is sent automatically to our system. There is no uptake it from their system and then uploading to ours, we're all in the same system. And I should mention, it's not just body cam. Their photographs are handled the same way, their case reports, and I'm told in one of my meetings I've had with Axon, very soon that these cell phone dumps that we do, that are oftentimes hundreds of gigabytes, those are also going to be able to just be pushed from the button, they'll be able to share those through the system as well. So that's sort of an overview of where we're at, if you want to.
Yeah, Jared's following our guys, gets help from Australia, that sometimes we have six, eight hours body cam video. And sometimes it takes them multiple temps, multiple long hours, and it kicks out, and I've seen everybody so frustrated after a couple of days of trying on and off to download this video, and it isn't all very important. This can't get better. And it's, I would love to have all the man hours that we, you were probably just a little gracious on the eDiscovery because I don't think it ever worked very good for me, to be honest with you.
Sheriff's Department had more problems than us.
It was not anywhere near seamless for us, or has been. I don't know why, but it's been a very frustrating system. I know the price was right, but it's never worked for us, for Sheriff's Department. Something definitely needs to change because we're putting too many man hours into something that probably isn't, and it's not, especially in today's world. But all accounts, this Axon system gets rated for great reviews and it's probably the best option in the background. And I've talked to a few people at these other agencies, and it is pretty seamless.
The catch is, it's not free. So it is, and the other thing, too, it's not year to year. And I talked to Marvin about this a couple of months ago, it's on one of his input as well. In order to add Axon and to go with their product, it's a five-year contract I have to enter into. And it starts, the first year is $8,050, and that includes the licensing for our office to be able to use it for six people, which is what we would need, and also the training and support that would come with that. They have a mandated 4% increase per year. So by the end, by year five, it's $9,418. I'm coming to you now, instead of waiting until September, just to kind of get a feel for what type of support I would have if I asked for just $8,000 in my budget. If I get support, and get the okay that that's going to happen, I would pay for the first year. I can come up, I think, with the money to pay for the first year, but I don't want to enter into a five-year contract between $8,000 and $9,000 a year because I can't swing that, I can't pay for myself all five years. So that's why I'm coming to you now, really to kind of get a feel for what use the council would think about increasing my case management prep budget by $8,000 for 2025.
I'd be all in.
What was the year five number?
Year five number is $9,418.44.
Are you talking going through the five years with us raising your budget that much each year?
What I would hope is just keep it at $8,000 at least for the first year, and just try to absorb the 4% each time. Now, I can't tell you that in five or 10 years from now, I would come back and say, hey, could you give me $9,000 instead of $8,000? Right now, you can give me $8,000, and said, I will take care of year one, but eight for the next four years. It takes, the other thing I should mention, too, is, even if you said yes, and I said yes, I'd love to have it, it wouldn't start tomorrow. It's going to take a while for that system to be put in place for us to get the training. That's beginning why I came before you here, to be able to just kind of get it started.
It's cheaper than what I thought it was going to be.
It's not as cheap as what I have now, but also what I have now, you heard George say, I hear from the state police. Two is, they're doing it, they're doing it because we have to by law, but it's not, for some officers, it's a, it's a hang.
Now, did they come up with their dollar figure by member of users?
Yes, yeah, so if we were like Marion County, it would be much higher because they'd have to pay a little fee. But we, I went through and looked, and we can get by with six licenses, six people. So that's what that came up with, was six licenses.
Now, do these licenses, is there a manager license per se, or one person, if they need to change something, is it possible anything like that?
No, I don't think so. I think each one is, can do anything that the system allows. But we would have to have the five prosecutors we have and then our, basically their paralegal could be available, if we need to have that.
So is it solely strictly by user, or is there a counterpart process?
It's by user, and then they've added, what they did was, they spread out the training fee that goes with it over the five years to make it a little bit more powerful. Because it was several thousand dollars, but they split it over five years and added to the total for the licensing fee.
Like, maybe each year for a certain amount of training, or once they get the training, or?
They will do it for us online, initially to get us started up, and if we had any type of issues, we contacted, and they fix it for us and help us with it.
Is our IT currently capable of handling this, and will it need to be expanded as well?
I don't think so, because we're not taking in any more data than what we're doing now through our system. This just works because most of the law enforcement agencies are already on Axon, so it's push-button transferring. I don't think it will affect our IT department, I don't think they'll have to add any training there.
So how soon are you looking to implement this? I know you're asking for us to be willing when budget hearing comes along, but is this something that if we're giving you our blessing today, you're going to go ahead and look at getting it started soon?
Yes, this week, I would reach out to, if I get, if I got the field, I would have the support moving forward, I could get started. Can I see this trick bag I'm in? I hate to, I know my budget meeting is until September, but this is a confided commitment, I can do that without.
Yeah.
So, but you guys will help.
One last question, so you went down a long list of all the departments that are running it in Green County right now, everybody from Indiana State Police, Linton. We have now a lot of other police departments in the county. Are they going to pick up this same product, or are we going to be maybe trying to go backwards when, for instance, school, school resource officer has a case, and now they're on e-commerce or some other system, and now we've got to do something different?
No, that's a good question, it's one of the things I consider. This system has what's called, I wish I remember the exact name, but essentially, it's a non-Axon portal. So let's say, we'll use Jasonville as an example, currently, they're not on Axon. I think eventually, they're going to switch Axon, but they're not, they're on a different system now. They will have a portal where their stuff will be uploaded to and be able to send to us, their body cams, their photos, video, whatever. So they will be able to use this, even though they're not an Axon, not an Axon department. So I don't see myself going backwards. And I think, and some of the other law enforcement officers, Brian, you might know, Axon, I think, is the leader in the state in terms of body cam, and probably gaining market shares to go forward. This is their foray into the discovery side with this product, I think it's called Prosecutor Premier, is their discovery platform. And obviously, they're wanting a foothold in the state as well, so I don't see myself going backwards. And I think what will happen is eventually, the other departments will probably go to Axon. But even if they don't, they're still going to be able to use this system through the portal that Axon has designed for non-Axon agencies.
One, one other question, when you provide this discovery to the other party, do they have to have the Axon system as well to be able to?
We send a link to the, it'll all be generated into a link, and they'll have, we can set the parameters, but I think it's 90 days typically, they have 90 days to open that, click that link and be able to download that stuff onto their system. They don't have to pay a fee, but we're probably going as to, the public defenders now have to pay to have this, they do not, I already checked it.
Any other questions or comments? I'm assuming, do we need to do a motion to approve, or just keep getting?
No, this is about taking the temperature of the council, it's not about making a hard commitment. If you take a vote today, you're essentially absolutely committing yourselves to increasing that budget, budget time. I think while you may all be willing to do that, the better procedure is to have the open discussion at budget time, and we've aligned it in this conversation, and of your apparent consensus that this is necessary and proper for the prosecutor's office.
As far as county law enforcement, I think it's a requirement, they've got to have it. I stand behind it, I agree with Jared. Obviously, I won't be able to vote, I'll have to abstain.
I would agree with that.
I mean, what would he need today to move forward, just, you know, what from everybody? I mean, I am all in.
If you just tell me you support it, that'd be good enough for me, I'll take it at your word. But I didn't want to do this at a five-year deal without talking to you guys first to see what your thoughts were.
I would support it. Go around the table, I don't know about the rest. Okay. I think that's, that's a need, okay, very, very needed, needy, to have that all for you, to get the information.
I'm good.
Yeah, I think it's something that's definitely needed.
I have no problem.
I don't have any problem with the campaign, I guess, if, you don't know what's going to happen, I have to cut some of the budget. Get, get lost.
I hear you. But again, this is something that I didn't want to wait until December or January to implement, if I could do it now, because that's affecting more than just my office, it affects pretty much every police officer in this county. Any other questions?
When are you going, what are you thinking, when are you going to start this yourself? I mean, is it going to be?
Based on what I'm hearing from you guys, I'm going to start that process this week, reach back up to and say, I want to go forward, let's get the ball going. Like I said, I'm going to pay for the first year.
Yeah.
I'm not going to come back and ask for additional appropriation, I think if maybe this is like that, that's not my idea. But I wanted some support on the back end for the next four years to be able to.
Right, yeah. Well, I wanted to ask that question, be, definitely what's going on, so that's good.
So if you hear Sheriff's Department sometime this week, or next week, I think that's all I have, unless there's any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Judge Martin.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Nicole and I might be tag teaming a little bit on our, what we're coming before you on, but I felt the need to address this issue first. I wasn't sure if you guys would want this ahead of time, but we're going to kind of go through it.
That's good.
We've got a little handout, right?
Yeah.
Well, when I was elected back in 2008, you know, things were kind of in place with the current system, we have the probation department, we have drug and alcohol, and so I can't speak to how it all came about prior to that. But in 2008, I believe that's when our current drug and alcohol director, Ms. Knoll, was hired and has been with the drug and alcohol program ever since. Prior to that, I think it was a revolving door in drug and alcohol, and people didn't kind of take it as serious as we do now. And you'll, one thing to premise this by is, we are unusual in that most counties don't have a separate drug and alcohol program. But that person that handles that is within the probation department, so they are considered a probation officer. So when you look at the second page of the handout I gave you, you guys, I know, have been through budgets before, and you know that there's not a whole lot that you have to say in what a probation officer makes, that is dictated by the Office of Court Services, the Supreme Court tells you what they have to make. So Ms. Knoll has not been making nearly what a probation officer does, and doing a lot of the same work. But if you look back to page one of the handout, when she was hired, she was hired as Drug and Alcohol Director. I've got there on the left-hand side of the page, that was her job. Since then, she has taken over, we implemented pre-trial diversion services, or, excuse me, pre-trial services, which the Supreme Court has encouraged all of us through the new criminal rules to have a pre-trial program, to try to alleviate jail overcrowding. We've never had that issue, but we still try to address people that shouldn't be in the jail, what we can do to get them out of there. The sheriff, I think, could tell you, you're in regular contact and trying to get some problems that they might have out of the jail. Ms. Knoll works with those. People that, you know, we could keep them working, they'll go through maybe the pre-trial work release program, so we've got her doing that job now also. Then, in 2016, we started trying to develop a problem-solving court. Yes, we've been trying to do that since 2016, but when we got the opioid settlement money, we got the blessing of the county commissioners to use that money for a therapeutic justice program, the problem-solving court, and Ms. Knoll has been put in charge of that. Also, within 2021, our Supreme Court required us to have a local J-RAC, Justice Reinvestment Committee, Advisory Committee. We have that now, we're in compliance, Ms. Knoll is the vice chair of that, I'm the chair of that. But I will tell you that in just keeping up with my caseload, a lot of that responsibility falls on her, because I just can't do it and my current caseload. We currently, each year, Superior Court hits roughly in excess of 800 criminal cases filed each year. That's just the criminal cases, that's nothing else. A large majority of those have something to do with drugs and alcohol, so again, they go to Ms. Knoll. So Ms. Knoll is currently making approximately $58,000 a year, and she has been with the drug and alcohol program in excess of 16 years. If you look on what's required of a probation officer's salary, she would be making, without any supervisory roles, in excess of $68,000. That's just as a probation officer. That's not counting pre-trial services, therapeutic justice.
And she's not a probation officer.
She is not, but she does the same work as a probation officer, but when that was established, they didn't have the money to pay that, so therefore, they got around that.
So she's Drug and Alcohol Director.
And all of these other things.
But she's not a probation officer.
She is not considered a probation officer, she is a standalone office. I couldn't allow her to do the things that she does if she were just a probation officer. And I don't say that in just a probation officer, but they have certain responsibilities and requirements that, I couldn't put her in charge of the therapeutic justice also, and in charge of the pre-trial services, and she also works with the jail for the jail based services. She's hired a case manager that does the pre-trial reports most of the time if she's not available, also helps her with the drug and alcohol, and we've got, you know, the therapeutic justice program up and rolling. You know, just a little bit about that, we had, we currently have three participants, we had one of our participants come in last week for court, he has held the job for the longest that he has, and it's only been a little over two weeks that he has, probably in 20 years, he has $200 in his savings account. And he cannot thank us enough, because we're working with him to get his life turned around. I think when he went into the program, there were four criminal cases pending against him. So, you know, maybe to you and I, that doesn't seem like a big deal, but you should have seen the look on this guy's face, he's got $200 in a savings account, that he's never had a savings account in his life. He's getting his driver's license back.
She's, she's a liar.
So I'm asking, that part of that opioid settlement money, that the commissioners have given us a blessing to use, I'm asking that $15,000 of that go towards supplementing Ms. Knoll's current salary as the Drug and Alcohol Director, to pay her for running the therapeutic justice program, doing the pre-trial services, and then the other many other responsibilities that she has.
So the opioid settlement's not going to sustain that salary after when?
Well, I believe that we get payouts from that for the next 15 years.
I'm not asking.
In 15 years, I, you'll be fighting somebody else about that now. I'm trying to rectify it, an injustice now. Because I can tell you that if Nicole left today, she could go to Worthington and start out at $84,000. That is a lot more than what I'm proposing here, doing the less work, making, that would be $12,000 worth, well, $11,000 more than what I'm proposing. And I think just about every person in this room has dealt with Ms. Knoll, and they can tell you what a service she provides to this community. So like I said, I'm just trying to bring her up to not what she deserves, but at least make it a little more fair than what it currently is.
And two, three comments. Do you want this to get to that email, or when this budget time comes, or?
As soon as possible, and the money's sitting there.
Okay, now, my second question was, how much money is in there?
And she'll be bringing this to you, but I believe right now, we have in the restricted
And what's not earmarked in the mail?
Well, some of that is, but, and it's listed on the sheet I just gave you. This is what I'm tagging on.
I don't think we understand how to do that.
Okay, so you got $348,000 plus.
It's in the high end.
The case manager that we would be hoping to supplement is the $33,000, so basically minus $33,544, and then the $44,000, so less than $100,000 from that. If you go down there to the, basically add up all the bold, and subtract that from $348,000. We're still going to have about $200,000, over $200,000. And it gets paid into each year.
The same amount?
No, it drops down, but I don't know that any of it's supposed to let's the.
Each, I don't remember, I think you guys received the, we have a funny that we'll be seeing for the next 15 years. Yeah, I just, I think it stays like around $30,000 and below us that we would get.
It never drops below $15,000.
Just through April, we brought in $357,000.
That's what was in there, yes.
Can you say it there? Okay, I'm just lost, sorry.
Well, because you don't have, there's a packet of information like this, that's on the internet, that we didn't print it out, but it was sent to, I think it was the commissioners, but it's paid out over the next 15 years, is it 15 years? And it, because it divides it up by county, and what each county gets, not only county, but then there's each municipality also gets, um, okay.
I was thinking it was 18 years. So we've got, in this fund today, we have $348,000, correct?
Right now, the balance is $348,066.
And then we're going to subtract those in the goals, and all of the total. That's where I'm lost, I don't know, I don't know what our bottom line is here, how much we have after all these goals, and what we're going to get every year, that's where I'm a little bit lost.
Well, I mean, I could make a copy of that, but it's going to be a lot thicker.
Well, I mean, I can't make a decision without the numbers. I don't know how much money is in there.
There is $348,066, I mean, 348, the total funds as of April 24, 2024, on that first line, is how much money is sitting in the fund right now. That's what's in there, and we are only, what her presentation's going to be is asking for this, nothing has been approved. So this is what's in there. So we asked, we're really asking for this. But nothing has been approved.
Okay, so this money is staying, none of it's been spent, and none of it's been funded?
There, there has been raised, but, as you can see, the total funds used in 2023 is $4,794, the total funds used.
The total funds used is .24 so far, $1,184.80.
This is what was, this is what's been spent, so 8,000.
Okay.
That's all this has been spent.
So this is what's in there. None of this has been appropriated, none of this has been spent.
She is going to be making a presentation asking for these things. These are two separate funds. One is unrestricted. We are asking that it come out of unrestricted.
I started with those, the bottom number, I guess.
So she's making some.
Well, she wants these.
So this is going to go on for 15 years? That you know what?
So if you take, say 100,000 off of the 348, you still have roughly 250,000.
Okay, and then you're getting that in that every year.
Well, we do, but like I said, it's a packet that has an online that is many, many. The commissioners are the ones who receive.
You may know, but I don't know. But that's a good answer. I'm sorry. It's just not good.
May I?
So how much more really get every year?
At least 20,000.
Okay, thank you.
You would need 50% higher.
For getting more years.
At least, because that's one.
What is the given, what is your unrestricted answer?
The unrestricted, you can go for really about anything. The restricted is an appendix that it has to fall with under, and, and one of the sections in the appendix is that it's servicing the people involved in the criminal justice system.
I was, correct me, I don't know. Nicole, I thought at one point when we were first, we're talking about the restricted and unrestricted funds, you had given us some of this information.
I did.
Okay. I thought, I mean, I thought she kind of broke it down and told us at that point, like it starts out so much, and then it's so much each year.
Right. So.
I did a presentation on that after the first settlement. I did copies of everything.
Everybody else got that stamped in junior building beside me?
I don't.
Yeah, bull crap. Yeah, no.
Okay. I don't know if the commissioner remembers how much money it is.
It varies every year.
But I mean, it goes to the county and then each municipality gets some, and if they don't use it or it's under a certain amount, then it goes to the county. But it, it's like a thousand page document.
Yeah, it's, it's way too many pages to read. I take that. It's.
It covers every county and every, every city and town and states. And we have to go across 20, 15 years. My view of it is here.
I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just saying that you're asking me to make a decision about budgeting, and I don't have the resources. And I don't care if it's in the pages. You should know that 1,025 of us won't pay for any different county. So somebody has to know what the bottom line is, like all of that.
Right. I want to be difficult because I don't want to compare prosecutors or probation officers to this position. I'd rather just say she's a director and this is her responsibilities. Now let's break those down and see what she's worth and not compare her to a probation officer because I don't think that's a fair comparison.
Okay.
On just this.
Okay.
I kind of agree with Karen now. Talking money, women are getting raises at any time. It'd be tricky. I'm just not comfortable with that, you know, with investigating.
I just want the bottom.
Well, what we're going to do near the end, although it won't happen, but I'm just not comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm not trying to say, you know, give us a little more or a lot of eyes or anything like that. I'm just saying that I don't, I don't understand the bottom line.
Well, right now, I'm just thinking, maybe wrong. She gets paid, okay, just like everybody else works here. You got other things that she can be paid out that you can say, here, okay, we got that. So if you're going out.
That's what we're coming here for, this, because the commissioners.
That's right.
Give us permission to spend this.
That's right. Okay. So that's just a couple lines there, you're done. I mean, you know, they get paid anyhow. You got money coming in, and the commissioner said, yes, go ahead and do it. I, from what I see and what I hear, I think they're right.
And just so everybody knows, I run this past Mr. Holt Paul, Oscar, I ran it past Ashley, the chief public defender, I ran it past obviously Judge Allen and the sheriff, so, and they're all part of JRA. But I mean, if you guys want me to know that each time, what the bottom line, what you guys will, well, commissioners will be getting.
Well, none of this will come out of anything that we do here.
Okay.
It does not come out.
15 years anyway.
Yeah, but that's, that's because that's being given to them to use the way they want to use. That's just, I'm just trying to clear that out. It's not costing us anything here. Outside of payroll, okay? So I think, I think to me.
So you was, the printout of.
If you can, if you can send the command.
I just want the bottom number.
There's a link. I can send you the link. And then that way you can look at it because it goes right across there, what, what?
Yeah, there's no sending.
Right.
They keep, also keep in mind that it says what Green County is giving, and then it has each of the municipalities, and then read because there are certain requirements that the municipalities don't take theirs, then it goes back up to the county.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to reveal that personally. I want somebody to come to me for money. You should, somebody has to know, how much money do you think they're going to get? That's all I want to know. How much money is the bottom line? I don't want to have to like figure out what I can, but I don't think that's going to happen. You're coming to me for money, so.
Well, I believe. You should have all your figures right and be able to present it.
Correct.
On what the numbers are.
They've been presented previously. I apologize that, I understand you guys see a lot of things. I see a lot of things. I, I.
We're different. Well, I'm not the worst in the paper press. Are you looking to advertise this today?
No, I will bring those figures back to you in a nice clean printout so that everybody sees what the municipality years wants to come. But I also, at that point, I don't know if it's going to be needed, but I just don't think she's going to go to the end of the year.
Already know the answer.
Well, what are the things?
I'm just, I'm just.
We're not having.
Yeah, that's right. It doesn't cost cash.
Now, this, this is an additional to her county funded salary. This is not adding to her county funded salary.
Right, but that's money that they get from Indiana. You know? I mean, that's pretty, that's uncalled.
She's probably got to every.
Right now, it is broken across seven pages, so we'll have to.
And the column to look at, I believe, is referred to as abatement share. That's the restricted fund.
There's also the unrestricted.
So that says 21,000. So that's what we got this year.
No, but see, it cuts off from here. Because it's going to be from the next. There's 2038, that's what it's coming in at this time. It's in 38.
So 238 is going to be at 20.
34.
We all heard all that.
No, I'm talking.
That's kind of the issue.
I'm not talking about the issue. It just takes these. Marvin, it looks like you may be just, oh, you're upstate. You got to consider all the things, so you got to. 24, you paid that share. That was added, 25,000 we added.
So it's going to sustain itself. I understand that. I understood that, Marvin.
No, nothing that, that, there's other ones under this that we don't know, you have to count because this is just a county. And then each municipality also gets a share. But if they don't use it or don't have it designated, then it can go to the county.
So that's.
They're going to get least this much. At least. And so this will be at 27. So it's not always going to be down. See, some of this will not go.
I think everything is.
You guys don't see this.
I just took the word for it.
The one was, that was 35, but in 2028, it goes up to 46.
Okay, so they have.
But I also think we, I don't know that, that, because they keep making other settlements, but I, so I think those numbers keep changing. Because the more settlements that they make, then they supplement.
With each of the companies, the pharmaceutical companies that have distributed the opioid.
But you're definitely going to get what you're asking for. That's the bottom line.
Yes.
It's not of anything general founder related.
That we, we are not asking for anything out of your money.
I got you. Check, ma'am, I have to come back around.
And like I said, we can't even say that it's going to be, that's the least because some of it can come from Clinton, can come from, I think it's going to be, it would be more like the lion's share, the smaller ones, because if they don't get a certain amount, then it can go to the county. But I don't know that you're always going to know that until the year after, because if they didn't use it.
So.
I can't give you.
You increase somebody's salary because there's, we just can't say, we can't increase it, can we?
Need a salary ordinance amendment, just like I just wrote in the margin of my notes.
Okay.
And so we wouldn't actually be able to start until the amendment was in place, which is to say the, if you acted today, you would act on a salary ordinance amendment at the next meeting on May 20th. And then the new salary would take effect at the payroll period that starts following your meeting on the May, on May 20th. I don't have the payroll periods memorized, so it may well be that one starts on May 19th.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do we need a job description? Since I do do a lot live.
Yeah, it'll be two weeks from there.
It probably will hurt.
1434.
It will lead to, it probably will.
I think that's a lot of year comes up too. Say this money dries up in five years.
So it can't.
It can't.
No.
No. What is it, 2038?
It's already set by state.
Hopefully I'll be alive in 38. So written in stone, there's 2038.
Yeah.
Grant?
Yes.
I would anticipate writing this because it's going to come out of a different fund. It'll be a separate, it'll be separate from Nicole's basic drug and alcohol pay. It'll all come into the same salary block, but it's coming from different locations. But when I write this up, I anticipate writing it to indicate that it is tied to the opioid settlement. And at such time as the opioid settlement fund ceased to be available, that these funds with supplemental roles would necessarily cease to be available. We have done that with other physicians that are grants supplementary.
Because something tells me the next person might, after the call, they don't, they don't, maybe, I mean, might not be able to get them to do all of these. This is in addition to her job.
Yes.
And that's why, you know, I just want to compensate. So.
Right, the emphasis on director because she wears many hats. I understand.
So can we call her the therapeutic justice case manager? And that's what she's getting paid as?
I think that's fine. I don't want to name her, but I just don't.
That's what this is for, is for the therapeutic justice. And I just said she does the pretrial services, but it's tied to the therapeutic justice. Not everybody that goes to the pretrial is actually going to be the therapeutic justice.
Or she can't, she can't be in the true position. I, I don't think.
I was anticipating modifying a job description to accommodate one position. If that requires retirement, the existing job description for the time being and creating another one from it that adds duties and changes its title, that's 10 more minutes of time.
So that has to be, or you don't know?
No, I think that it's appropriate under circumstances because it does cover considerably additional duties.
Whatever we call her, I guess, you just want to make sure that we got everything that she's been working on.
We just have to make sure that it, I mean, I think it all is going to fall within the restricted funds. We just don't want to put things in there that aren't technically.
Right.
And again, I just don't want to have to come to you guys and say, we need another person, because ultimately, that's probably what's going to happen. But hopefully, I'm not here and Ms. Knoll's not here, it's going to be somebody else. But this is, I mean, I think it's going to grow such that it's going to, you know, going to have to take on another person just to be able to do that.
Well, I will, we'll throw my motion for a table. Will I make a motion that we go ahead with it?
Okay.
Or wait till it's.
You need time to.
What are we going to do for somebody?
Position description and salary ordinance amendment.
Yeah.
So isn't that what we're making?
But we can go ahead and make a motion to approve pending.
Move to approve and direct me to present those at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Motion made by Ron.
I'll say. But she's going to give her salary. Everything else comes from the state.
Okay, so motion.
Nothing else of hers are changing.
The salary, when I use salary, I want to say, she gets her salary just like everybody else gets their salary, okay? So everything else is coming from the state is what I wanted to.
Opioid settlement.
Yes, all whatever, how many things you have differently in there, I'm not sure. So she's still getting a raise, but it's not paid by the county council.
Exactly.
But she's got a lot more hats on her.
So that seems pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I had a motion made by Ron to approve the 15,000 and to have direct Marvin to go ahead and do a salary ordinance amendment and a job description update. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jerry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
It's going to take you a little longer once you want it, huh?
So we got, we got it all set.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You guys making aye for everything I tried to do for the county means a lot to me to be with us. I came here today to kind of give you an overview of where the money has been and the way that we have received both the restricted fund and the unrestricted fund. Well, one thing that I am asking as in terms of the restricted fund is that we add in a line item for prevention efforts. Our county has many different organizations that would like to be able to provide prevention efforts for drug and alcohol abuse, and I would like to have the opportunity to help fund some of those programs. One of the programs in particular is our strengthening families program that's from Warner County. They won't have any more money at the end of this cycle, and they were hoping that maybe they would be able to do another set of strengthening families programs for the rest of this year. And it costs like $30,000 to get that to them.
Okay, so.
When we're down to restricted and unrestricted, we give you both, right?
Yeah.
So we just have to come to us to use it?
I just want you guys to know.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Yes, I want you guys to know. I wanted to know if you wanted to be part of that process, to know where the money was going. I think it'd be good for you guys to know that stuff. And so that way, we can tell you what funds we were going to do or who had applied for the funds. Maybe I could come up with like a little quick sheet of like. Maybe I could come up with like a little quick sheet of like requesting for the funds, and then we could have to fill it out, and I could let you know which ones we had been presented with. So you guys are active and participating in this. And I also want to be a good steward of the money, not one that like just go crazy. But I want to make sure it's something that we all are.
I think you're doing fine.
So whatever you say, adding a line item, so for instance, like this shows case manager, fringe, supplies, drug screens, contractual services, and mileage. So then you want one that says.
On the second page of the unrestricted funds.
And then down there, we have done, proposed to getting balance of 50,000 in a prevention line. Oh, okay.
Well, I thought you said it was all unrestricted.
I understood, I may have restricted, I apologize. We have hired a peer recovery specialist, and she's going to be teaching our education classes. And we're working with the Q360 program to create a reentry education class at the jail. It's something that me and Amy both identified as something that we needed in the county to help individuals being released from incarceration, to make sure they have a place to go, they have a home, they have their driver's license, they have their birth certificate, they can sign up for food stamps. Making those things done, teaching them about bank accounts, like you said, like we talked about, just that in therapeutic justice, never had a savings account before, a lot of them don't know how to do a checking account, or even how to get one. So that would be all things that she would be able to teach them in this reentry program. And evidence shows that addiction, people in addiction will respond the best from people who are in recovery from addiction. And she actually started in our jail, our peer recovery specialist did. I met her in our jail 11 years ago, and she has done amazing things since then, and she's been cleaning since then. So we're very proud of her, and we're very excited to see her give back to the community where she started from. So, and I think.
Oh, the deposit.
Yes, just the appropriations, that's it. So.
So the F I C A and the herb are for that company.
Yes, right now she's on a contract, for contractual services, she's not full-time. So we're just paying her a contractual basis right now for education services. Nice thing too, is she also speaks Spanish, so that doesn't.
That is good. Any other comments or questions? Then I would entertain a motion to allow the line item of prevention with a beginning balance of 50,000.
What's the payout?
It's the, it's the prevention part there. Yeah, just so she is able to use that for that, so.
For the upcoming budget.
It's for this, it's just, she's already got it, it's already in the unrestricted fund. It's just allowing her to use it in the 50,000 as prevention.
It's already there.
Yeah, it's already there. It's out of the opioid.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Ron, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I also wanted to let you know too, on the case manager on the restricted fund, we actually have a grant right now for pretrial services, with paying that salary, we only have to supplement it, remember we're transitioning from one grant cycle to another grant cycle. For some reason, they don't line up right, so it's not that that always comes out of your authority.
Okay, thank you.
You are busy, aren't you?
I try to be, yes.
We've got this year's. To advertise the appropriation for the restricted and unrestricted funds.
So. You better add it to me.
We determined last year that both restricted and unrestricted funds need to be appropriated. And in this case, that appropriation will be back to the therapeutic justice program, which was funded in full by the original restricted and unrestricted distributions to the county. County has received both restricted and unrestricted distributions for 2024. And so the department is once again seeking your support in continuing the therapeutic justice program by moving to advertise for appropriation of both of those accounts to the therapeutic justice program.
Oh, for what you're about to go, 24?
Okay, so we need a motion made, so entertain a motion to advertise for the appropriations for both.
Motion.
Okay, Jerry made the motion, second?
I'll second.
2024 restricted, non-restricted that she's already receiving, she wants the permission to.
To appropriate the money for the therapeutic justice program.
So we need to do that through your.
Okay, so I've got a motion made by Jerry for advertisement, I have a second by Brian, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Hey, Richard.
Good afternoon, thank you for your time. Coming for you today to request to advertise our digital appropriation by memorial flags. Here to answer any questions you might have.
To buy a what?
Memorial flags to be placed on the veterans' graves on Memorial Day, or.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ron made a motion to advertise for the $2,500 there for memorial flags. Okay, and Jerry seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I agree with you.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, up next, Cindy Rotman from the Hamilton Center.
Hi, some of you, I think, have heard from me already regarding what the state of Indiana is getting ready to do. I presented at the, a meeting a few weeks ago, but want to tell you all as well. So the state of Indiana has partnered with DMHA to have funds from SAMSA come through the state as opposed to DMHA funds. It's the, I think most of you got a letter talking about the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Initiative. So Hamilton Center is trying to partner with DMHA. DMHA is hoping that Indiana is selected as a CCVHC demonstration state. What that means for Indiana is there's funds available to community mental health centers in order to do more for the folks in the community. So what, what the letter says is, these are some positives that'll come from that. Responding to a mobile crisis, the mobile crisis to behavioral health and addiction emergencies in the community. Enhancing the 24/7, 365 crisis stabilization work through West Central Indiana. So in the back, at the mobile crisis, currently we have a mobile crisis unit in Viva County. That is, stays in Viva County currently, it's funded through SAMSA. What we're doing, going to do is add one in Sullivan County, which can travel 45 miles, which would also cover Green County. So the mobile crisis is available 24/7, 365. So if someone in the community has a crisis, mental health crisis, addiction crisis, substance use crisis, we can respond to that. And the mobile crisis response team will provide a seamless transition to the most appropriate level of care. The hope is that the mobile crisis unit responds, they get the care they need, and we divert that from going to jail, that they get the care they need. And then enhancing the 24/7, 365 stabilization work for West Central Indiana. So it's designed to provide services in the least restrictive environment. Like I said, we're trying to divert from going to jail, or even going to extended inpatient unit, to take care of the crisis on the spot. Provides a structured environment that allows individuals to receive the appropriate treatment to reduce unnecessary hospitalization and incarceration. The crisis stabilization operates on a no wrong door policy, meaning we accept all individuals. And we provide the necessary peer nursing and case management services. So it doesn't stop the crisis, we also move toward the next level of community power on care. And it's integrating with the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, have you all heard of 988?
Yes.
The crisis line? So once Indiana becomes a demonstration state or has CCVHC, the 988 line will then connect with all the CMHCs in the state. Someone calls from, you know, rural Green County, Indiana, 988, 988 checks the list out to see who's closest. They call that CMHC, that CMHC responds. So it's a quicker, more seamless transition, something like 911, only for mental health crisis. And then coordinating primary healthcare needs. Hamilton Center has Grace Clinic up at in the terror office, and we also have one in Ploton. The plan, if CCVHC or when CCVHC comes, is that we have more accessible primary healthcare as, well as mental healthcare. So the two will be together. All right, and then down to the second half, you see reducing non-emergency, emergency department visits. Currently, when someone has mental health crisis, they show up at the emergency department, or they come to us, often they go to the ER after hours. What, what our hopes to do is to have a crisis stabilization unit in place, so that they follow us, so they don't have to go to the emergency unit. And then diverting individuals from incarceration to treatment. Currently, HCI actively participates with law enforcement, courts, and jails to coordinate care and reduce incarceration and recidivism. Hamilton Center provides comprehensive mental health and substance use disorder services by offering walk-in, same-day, and store-scheduled appointments. We coordinate care between correctional facilities, working to help reduce the number of individuals reentering the criminal justice system. We also increase treatment for medication-assisted treatment, that's folks who are addicted. There is a Medicaid-assisted treatment program, we have one in Dinsens, and we have one in Terre Haute. So currently, that's a daily, people who are addicted and are trying to get off of addiction, it should accommodate a day's system. They get counseling and they get their Medicaid-assisted treatment as well. And then increasing or investing healthcare workforce in our communities. Hamilton Center has partnered with St. Mary's. The goal is to raise up workers for our area, or for any CMHC. So if you work in Hamilton Center, you want to go to St. Mary's, there's a reduction in tuition, so that we can raise up more in the workforce, because we all know social workers right now are hard to come by.
Especially in this county.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, it's not just in Green County, it's in general. Therapists are hard to come by in the state of Indiana, and I don't think it stops at our borders, I think we could put on that. And then, you know, lastly, the CCVHC grant that DMHA wrote will know by June, or July 1st, if Indiana was chosen. If Indiana's chosen, all of this will kick in on January of 2025. If Indiana's not chosen, the governor has signed into law that Indiana will become a CCVHC state in 2027. The hope is that it happens soon, the sooner it happens, the more, the sooner we can help. So that's it in a nutshell, any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Amber.
I have something to give you guys, listen, as they are Casa programs, we have had changes in our office. January 29th of this year, we hired Blake Work as the new juvenile court advocate. So Blake works a majority of cases, and then he helps me with any additional things that need taking care of, as far as planning of this and things like that. As far as the program as a whole, I just wanted to provide in this essay that as of today, we currently have 49 children that are adjudicated twins. And that is a total of 34 cases. The program is heavily volunteers, we have 16 active volunteers in our program. And then add staff, there's, myself is the director of Blake and juvenile court advocate, and I have Vicki all the hours, a part-time office admin. Me and my staff all work cases, I've heard, I'm working four cases on the outside, a lot of state Casa, IT and R. They are not a theme, oh, directors working cases, however, to keep our numbers low concerning children, I do. And I also do, because I have worked social work for a lot of years, I like to get out of the office more cases also, so instead of just trying to be. But Blake is currently at 12 cases, and Vicki currently has 12 cases. So I am hoping, we did have a fall in numbers, and I wanted to bring that up, and we'll see that as the budget carry. I believe on one of my lines, I always provide you guys matching grant and capacity grant, because there is a supplement fee out of there. This year, we worked nine capacity grants, so we did not get any of that funding. That money, in years past, gave salary supplements to the juvenile court advocates and physicians, and office admin. I had wrote in both grants, though that that would be taken out of either, so that's why I did. I'm using the rest of the funds in the capacity grant, and I switched it to matching, is how I wrote it, so you guys will see one at all this year, because there's a lot of capacity to sign. The reason, a little bit about that, is our numbers did change, so with Green County being small, just like she said, there's not a lot of social workers, I think that's been with volunteers. You see, you did see a drop, obviously, from COVID and recouping. With me coming in, I have been drinking alcohol for two years, there was a lot of things where, and I had to clean it up, our program, to meet the state, so I had to discharge several volunteers that were not in guidelines at a state level. So right now, like I said, we're at 16, all of those are very active, I agree, talk to us. I would just like to present like the importance of what we do. I know a lot of people say like, we're the voice of child, we represent best interest. But I believe there's a whole other side to it. We see our children, our cases every month. I will tell you, the state of Indiana does not even, does not have enough foster homes. We have placements from Newburgh, and we drive through the South Bend to see a child. So, I, I will, we have a huge child up there, but that kind of gives you the range of Indiana, like where volunteers and staff are going to see these children and make a difference. I wanted to finish, just the importance and where we have made a difference is, and give a little more insight as to what we do. I want to give an example, we recently had one, a child was placed in a home, and DCS did not take all safety measures to make sure that the child was safe. So they replaced it at home with a placement that had a drug history. I filed into court to object that we have to ensure the safety of the child in the best interest. That child, after being placed, was once again removed because he was placed without drug screens being done, things like that. And when I ordered, I asked for three ordered drug screens, it came back that where that child was placed was using. So the child was taken right that out of the home. That is really simple at all, because one part of it is that trauma was caused by providers, which should never be happening. But I think that's just to give a little bit of an insight of what we do and how we do make a difference. Because if Casa was stopped there, no one would have ever stood up and said, hey, this is not, you know, this is a crime that we can't ensure the safety of this child. Do you guys have any other questions for me?
How are you adjusting to?
How are you adjusting to the new role?
I like it a lot. So I like working with Amber. I like working with Vicki, and everybody in here has been great to me so far. And I hope it continues to be great to me, but.
Well, we're glad you're in there. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for what you guys do.
That's all they ask.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, I met Sherry.
How you doing, Sherry?
Good, how are you? Good to see you, Sherry.
Yeah, good to see you. Hand dance, too. I hear it's long, you hear it's a crap.
Hi.
Do we have everything? Or is there more hand dance? I guess two, two of these.
Okay, thanks for having me this evening. I wanted to put together, this is sort of a draft of where we are with Health First Indiana. With Health First Indiana here, 2024 is our planning year for putting things in for execution in 2024. What I tried to do, if you could just go right to page two with the checks. So this is a list of the core services and where we are right now with providing those services. The first section, already providing, of course, we're doing by the records, childhood organization to our closest, control of case management, childhood fatality review, lead screening and case management, emergency preparedness, food protection, subject inspection committee, and decontamination orders. With the decontamination orders, I just want to say two days. But Conset does do a great job. We've been on sites together. It's amazing that they, what they go into and they still treat everybody with dignity and respect. I'm just going to put that all together. What somewhat, what we're somewhat providing is community disease prevention and control. We've started our annual health fairs. That falls in that category, but we want to expand the services that we're offering. We also do have our immunization clinics with shorter volumes in that category as well. Access and linkages to care. The Casa situation is a prime example of how we wrap around services, and we need to have those readily available when we enter into a situation. For example, with septic and with decontamination situations, we found out that there is a USDA loan through the USDA that will grant a certain percentage of the money if you qualify for it. And if you don't, the loan is like 1% spread out over 20 years. It's just, it really helps people get back on their feet. And so we're looking to place more linkages like that to care and for the social determinants of religious finances. Trauma and injury prevention. We want to increase that because we are finding in Greene County the size, seniors, trauma, and suicide is the second highest cause of death in Greene County. Maternal-child health. We are currently participating on the maternal-child health morbidity review for infants, and we want to expand morbidity and fatality reviews to look at social determinants for also injuries, deaths as a result of trauma. And what we are not providing, we currently don't have HIV, hepatitis C, and STD testing in the health department. We don't have a suicide and overdose fatality review. We do not have the tobacco prevention and cessation. We don't have pest vector control in the unincorporated areas of Greene County. Public and semi-public pool inspections, tattoo and piercing inspections, eyelash extensions inspections. So you can see what we need to put in place. I started, and you can read this at your leisure. We'll tell you like where we are with what we're doing in 2024 and where we need to be with some of the core services more specific. Just as a quick cap. Do you have any questions about where we are and what we need to put in place? Yes. So what I have here is a preliminary budget. As you know, we're only into the first quarter of our current, the first year of Health First Indiana. And typically, we were doing budgets for in September, you know? So this is definitely a preliminary budget. We stand to get 669K at minimum. It could be a little more, but we won't know exactly. And once we do know, it'll be a budget minimum because it'll be active time, youth access to turn in. It's a year later, even for Greene County, right? Is it June?
Yes.
So I put in, we still will get FET and childhood immunization. These numbers may change. I don't anticipate them going lower, maybe a little more. But I budgeted for the same amount that we received last year.
So I guess one question I've got with some of these, where you're saying like, we're not, the Greene County Health Department is not providing those things yet. So I know with this money, these are things that you have to get in place. How much is like the hospital involved with helping with some of this stuff? You know, as far as like, at one point, I think they used to do like tobacco cessation or something, and maybe they, I don't know if they ever did testing or counseling for the HIV, that type of thing. But I'm assuming they also help maybe with the maternal and child health services?
So maternal and child health morbidity and fatality reviews are currently run by IU. So we plan on partnering with sovereign people. That's IU, Purdue Extension, Hamilton Center, Pregnancy Choices, all of, all of our healthcare facilities, including Greene County General Hospital, Greene County Health Institute, and our primary care providers to run the field cabinet of what we need to have done. Greene County General, specifically, what we have talked about, and we must share up those plans, but what we have discussed is bringing back the tobacco program. And what we will fund is actually the strips, the gum, and some of the case management.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Sure, please. Thanks, gentlemen. Your food inspections.
Oh, food here is going pretty good. They're going to split up in here.
Yes, we've, we've done 170 routine inspections already. We will be in compliance.
Good. That's great to know. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Okay. Final approval on advertised additional appropriations. So. I guess we just need to approve, we need a motion to approve the surveyor corner perpetuation in the amount of $55,000. Do I have a motion?
Move them separate.
Can we just do at least one motion?
No, they really shouldn't be done separately. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so I entertain a motion for the surveyor corner perpetuation final final. Kayron?
Yep, I'll second.
Brian, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Sheriff ECS found, do you have some more info on that or?
No.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion for the final approval for $39,731.90.
So moved.
Brian, second. Brian, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sheriff's commissary flooring in the amount of $16,188.2. Ron, second.
Second.
Second, Randall, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the last one, Sheriff V. Hickel, V. Hickels, a motion to approve that, $168,6415.
So moved.
Brian, second. Grant, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So we, we'd like to advertise for a couple additional appropriations this evening. One is our medical base. We're trying to do this quarterly for bump up to $146.64 and go back into care inmates.
Take care of infants. Okay. I would entertain a motion for that to be advertised. Do you think that can take care of infants? Are you trying to transplant or are you?
Motion.
Okay, Ron made a motion, second. Grant, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the next one is for $14. We get to evaluate if we report the social security, somebody's incarcerated, it's on this audience. I feel like they're up for recording. I guess we could, we could, we could do a little bit of our part of the time.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve to advertise the $14. Ron, second. Okay, Grant, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say we take care of the families.
Yes.
No, he's got another page.
Okay. Okay, so now you have a transfer out of local coordinating council budget to Sheriff training budget.
The grants that we receive, these, that, the interview schools and sending deputy.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to transfer the $1,000 from account 9122, local coordinating council, to the sheriff training budget.
I'll do this. So moved.
Hey, Brian, I need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Randall, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that is approved.
The next thing you'll see, other pastoral, wider program, the general county commissioners. This is catch for tomorrow. We will, we will do my job, so we, for the expanded project. And it's available to me. And I have the president of the commissioners and the county to make the decision, sign off, and I need to mail that to them. But here's the form that these, we sign whichever way you decide. At this time, our facility, couple of over five, over five years now. We're really not at, you know, my opinion, we're not interested in regional jail. That's just one guy's opinion.
Yeah, I don't think that.
Basically, they're asking, are you interested in participating in a regional jail?
There's three. I don't know whether or not.
So we're saying no.
I guess we'll.
You know what the commissioner said, no? The sheriff says no.
It wasn't your opinion.
Okay, I'm just asking.
I don't really see what's in it.
I don't see it as a personal opinion.
But they're required to do it, catch quarterly as they advance through their project or something.
Any other questions or comments? Then I would entertain a motion to say no to the regional jail. Grant, I need a second. Second by Karen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm a number one.
Okay.
Sheriff, Sheriff.
The last thing I have to say, since I'm going to sheriff's office, we've never participated in the, this is our man, it's a traffic safety grant. I had a couple different reasons for want to participate. We fill out paperwork. There's no way of wanting to get, talking to Mr. Harbin, the administrator, because it sounds pretty promising. So we applied for a grant for $122,417.60. We came up with that number having a meeting with our deputies because this is overtime. Realistically, number one, do you want to, do you want to work, we call them projects? Do you want to work these traffic projects? If you don't, no, I don't know. But if you do, realistically, how many hours would you work in eight years? They run out of fiscal year, starts in October. Then we base that off of their, they are willing to pay double time. So we came up with this number. It's a total of 2,092 hours. It wasn't the 11 deputies participating, now it's down to 10. That's another story, but it's one of the reasons I'm interested in doing this. I'm losing a deputy, May 10th, in Monroe County. She's going to go there and make $13,000 a year now. This gives our deputies an opportunity to earn more money, still be here, be seen, but it is overtime. They, they do have to work overtime. You know, they still be covered as far as their insurance and all of that. Whether it would be an overtime requirement, they would have to mark off duty and mark on duty, will be called projects and work whatever hours they're committed to work. They're doing their own breakdown, typically, they're working for after their shift to accomplish.
Is this similar to the old clicker ticket operation?
Yeah, now they call it clicker to live. So what we're looking at, they have blitz periods who will be doing seatbelt enforcement, stop, stop on violations, P WIs, things of that nature, other distracted out and other primary focus. But they loosened the rules. Now, any traffic violations apply to recovery. Even if, say, I stopped somebody for a seatbelt ticket and it turns out, it turns into a drug possession case. It still applies towards the project time. So they've broadened the horizon, bigened horizon, so to speak, on how these go. I'm learning about it because we.
Not that long time.
Tom, Tom Franklin, I think, was the last sheriff that.
It was part of both of us. It was part of both of us.
No, we, we did it. I mean, Terry and I have done it.
I would Terry would do.
Okay. It was probably under Leon, I think, is where we.
Oh, yeah. I wasn't sure.
I remember doing it.
All was under Leon. I didn't, he must have just did it his first year.
I think it's probably when we quit doing it. It was his first year.
Okay, because I think Tom was actually the one that started it. I can tell, maybe it's Tom.
Because I think Tom was actually the one that started it, I can tell, maybe not Scott. I'm looking at it as, I don't have any deputies I want to lose. I'm losing one I don't want to lose. It's all over money. Well, I should say, she's going to work, they never work less than seven people on a shift. Okay, they don't work as hard as our people, they don't cover the geographical area that we cover. There's a lot of nuances to this, but the opportunity for them to earn more money, I think will be advantageous in retention. With that being said, I've had a conversation with Marvin regarding the Fair Labor Standards laws. Because it's a quarterly reimbursement from the grant. My pockets almost go up here. I need pockets to go here to carry that with my budget. So, the only, Marvin and I had a discussion, the only way I could make this work, and this is basically for you to ponder and think about, is to cover this overtime burden that we would, if we get this grant, we would commit to you, I would need to borrow money. So, make a move on and then reimburse it when I got the money back. Is the only way I can make it work unless you guys have a better idea, but that would be the only thing from stopping us from making this work is, at this point, my pockets are deep enough for my budget. Again, we won't know for a couple months, but it sounds very promising. They only have 21 partners in the state of Indiana right now. He called me looking for us to partner and he wants us on board and I'd like to discuss it with the deputies when they all are, almost every road deputies, you know, looking forward to doing that. So, that's kind of where I stand with this is I guess I need some help on figuring out this, if we could borrow the money, and then this every quarter, they turn it around pretty quick and get the money back to the regular.
I'm sorry, how much did you say it was again? I missed that.
We came up, we applied for a grant, we told them 122,417.60.
Seventeen, that is 72. And 60 cents.
And 60 cents.
Can you round that out?
They get 125. Good job. But that's how all the math worked out on the hours that everybody's willing to commit to in them. There's a few of them make a different rate if it's a sergeant or a chief deputy, it's just a little bit more, it's a little higher. It's an opportunity to make, you know, just a thousand dollars a year or more. Hopefully, that helps a little bit in the retention. And two, in just an open meeting, I know we're getting ready to do budgets and one of the things I've heard for years from deputies, mainly from the guys that have some of these more features, how come the brand new guy, the girl that put his uniform together makes the same thought? I would like to have some serious discussion with somebody, everybody, I don't know how you, what approach the council would like to take. I know we got a very substantial raise for deputies lost, we greatly appreciate it and I don't expect that to happen this year, I'll get that.
Second term.
But to help again with the retention, to come up with a five-year, 10-year, you know, something that we could do to acknowledge their time on the job. And all this, not typically, you don't see in the courthouse, you know, these are guys and gals that are giving their weekends and their nights and their holidays and almost every agency now has it. Something I'm competing against, something I showed Marvin is, I go now, people are advertising, they're pretty hard, they're giving you a week's vacation, your first six months. So, there's some things that are a little antiquated and I'm not saying that, I don't mean to say that, or take it in the wrong way, but there's some things that we could maybe move forward on and for, I'm going to start looking for a new person to say that, you know, we've got this in place, if you give me five years, if you're an instructor, a lot pays, people pay, you know, extra 100 dollars a year or whatever, if you're an instructor. That's a big commitment. And if you don't work in the business, you don't know, so I think it's my job to try to relate the best I can to you because you're making sound decisions and you got all kinds of things to worry about, but those are some of the things I worry a lot in the front years on the other side. Keeping you good solid deputies with a good base of knowledge, experience, nothing against my new people, I have one that graduated, he's a nice young man as you or me, he will be a great deputy someday, but right now, he's very, and we all started with him. But to get him to be a four-year, a five-year deputy, actually know what he's doing and be good, rock solid, that takes a commitment from them and it takes a commitment from me. I'd like to care. I guess I'm passing it on to you guys, you guys know this and I know you all care, I've seen you deal with all kinds of issues with employees, but it's a little different world at our office, you know, we're working all these shifts and holidays and with people that have all kinds of mental health issues and to keep somebody doing this job long-term in the environment that they work in, it takes a big commitment from everybody on our side as well. I just would like you to think about that. We're loving you here, we're much comfortable. We've got a great staff of people, you should be proud of your sheriff's department, I think you are, and I would like to do whatever I can on the retention over, but you know, I feel like that's a big part of my job and position. And I don't worry, some of these things you may not think about, you're going to go on to the next thing that you want to deal with and it is something that, it's not, I always say it takes first con stupid to get a 20-year placement. The things that you put up with, pay and work environment, and I'm not talking about the county environment, I'm talking about the environment out there on the road, what you put up with and the hours and missing things with your families. It's, and you have the same thing on EMS, I think you recognize that, a lot of the things with EMS. It's not gotten any easier. It is a whole different world from the start. As Brian did, a number of years ago, when he started, it was not made, it was more challenging every day. We're dealing, you know, that's the reason we're calling it CRT team, it's come a long way off. It's a shame that we even have to talk about going to that type of training, that type of equipment, all that, that's where you guys don't see it, goodness, but the people that are out there doing that, hopefully give you a little bit of comfort when you go home and go there. They're dealing with some difficult people, some dangerous people.
I'm going to redirect back to the grant. You said you'll know in a couple months if you receive the grant or not. And so, then at that time, you'll need to know if we're willing to let you borrow money, correct? Okay.
Right. Because that's the, really do, only hold up on my end.
Okay.
Because it is a reimbursement grant and I cannot not pay them.
Right.
By law. See, I'm, you know, the only way I can make it work is borrow money.
You know, you have probably been with you if you get the grant. That's just how we are, you know that.
So, Marvin, is there anything more we need to do with that tonight as far as making any kind of final statement, you know, a motion that we will be willing to do that and something that can be handled later?
It can be handled later, again, it's about taking the temperature through.
Okay.
That, I think, what I've done, passed on to larger moments, to the department resolution, that's likely why I wouldn't be here.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Special clicker ticket. They're offset by the state and then they go along. It's really, this is an all-year thing, but they have a blitz week where they really want you to focus or blitz long and you have to have so many contacts, doesn't mean you necessarily have to write a citation if you're wanting. So, this isn't something you can just do in a gray county. Well, we can work it all year long, but you definitely, if you're going to participate in the grant, you have to please participate in the blitz to assess and if it's mandated, but you can work the, you know, the OBDW ops, you can work them all year long. If you work the school bus stop, you can work them all year long. But if it's one of the things that they focus on for a blitz period, bare minimum, you got to do during that designation. So, you have no problem with using that? No, we shouldn't unless, unless we have deputies that say, hey, I overextended myself, then we have the option of, if I overextended, I could pass it on to another deputy and we could still use the money. Because it's not set in stone that is designated, this person just, this is a dollar amount. It's just, we use that as a, I have to have some way to gauge and we have to have a dollar for the grant. So, I ask them to be realistic, remember, you're still going to be on vacation, your wife's going to make sure you go with her, you know, instead of working project and you're going to gear on or take your kids fishing or play all your games, you gotta remember all that, do something realistic. So, that's how we came up with that. And again, it's our first time, we're probably going to get the vast majority of it right, but we'll probably have a few bumps in the way too. And the second, the deputies, I learned from, hey, I could have gone more and you should do that. Yeah. Thank you, counsel. Great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any county attorney business?
Nothing this evening, but it sounds like I'll have a pretty excellent.
Okay. Any other business to come before the council from the audience? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Ron, second.
Second.
Second. Brian, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.